Come on, one of these things does not match. I was good at that.
Welcome to the final meeting of the Sandusky City Commission for 2024. We have an invocation offered by Ms. Vargo, followed by the pledge, believe you.
Dear Lord, pray for us tonight as we lead the city in making decisions that affect everyone and we make really strong, good decisions for everyone. I also want to think about everyone going into the holidays and pray for everyone in the city, that everyone stays safe and stays healthy, as well as all of our employees of the city, please stay safe and healthy. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to lead in the city. In God's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mars, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Ms. Vargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Crable?
So moved.
A motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved, hearing no objection, Mr. Crable is excused. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December 9th, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of the December 9th minutes as presented.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved and those minutes are approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda comments. Mr. Lamarka, no comments this evening. I couldn't resist. I couldn't resist. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation, can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Ms. Mars, will you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, I will, and I will pass out the ordinance one. Just walked in. Item A, approval of final 2024 appropriation budget. Item B, approval of 2025 temporary appropriation budget. Item C, approval of grant application to ODNR for 2025 Marine Patrol Assistance Program.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, resolution, what is your pleasure?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I move for the adoption of these ordinances and this resolution pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I would like to point out that with respect to item A, and I could understand if someone was not familiar with this process, being a little concerned about legislation of this order being walked in, first of all, all the commissioners were well aware in advance that this was going to be walked in, and second, these are all items that have been previously approved by the commission for spending, and this is just a final reconciliation in adding up those numbers that we've already spent.
Excellent. Ms. Mars, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Ms. Mars, will you present item number one on the regular agenda?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a two-year contract with the Erie County Sheriff for the provision of public safety dispatching services for the City of Sandusky Police, Fire, and Service Departments commencing on January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murray?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Chief Oliver, this is not unusual to have a two-year contract. If we had that in the past, or have we always done singular contracts?
We have had multi-year contracts in the past. Most recently, they were year-to-year because the Dispatch Advisory Board was working with the county to try to figure out some sort of formulation to the costs.
Okay, and my understanding is there may be some provision in here to share cost-saving measures if they do occur and we don't hit certain...
Yes, we have in our contract, we meet with the sheriff regularly to look at the operation and the costs in hopes of keeping the costs at a minimum or less than what is actually projected in the budget right now.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I remain concerned about the amount of this overall burden that is shifting the residents of the City of Sandusky. I don't have the exact numbers available, but the percentage that the residents of Sandusky have paid for dispatch services has increased over the last 10 years, is my general impression. And I was inarticulate in the question that I asked Ms. Reader earlier, and she was away for a couple of days, and welcome back. But I'm going to vote for this legislation, it'll be for those of my colleagues who are here in perhaps two years, and to the chief and the manager to keep an eye on this. We do not have good transparency in terms of how this pricing is being set. My understanding was originally set by the sheriff in consultation with the chiefs across the county. That has changed, and the county commissioners are now setting that. So I would just keep an eye, a caution to keep an eye on that, how the costs of this have crept up, still savings, to be certain, and we're very appreciative of the fact that Erie County hosts the dispatch services, but we also need to make sure that we remain fair to our own residents. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? It is my prognosis regarding this contract and this arrangement that these prices are going to continue to go up until they reach a level where we can do this again on our own. We are quite a ways away from that yet. That's certainly not going to happen in my political lifetime, but I believe that it will happen at some point in time, and that will be up to future commissions to make that decision to break from this joint agreement that we have and go back on their own, or perhaps partner with another one or two municipalities and make economic sense out of it. At some point, this will stop making economic sense, for now, it still does. Ms. Mars, will you poll the commission on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, will you present item number two?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work performed by Spearbrother Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the Camp Street and West Forest Drive Utility Relocation Project in the amount of $26,202.76, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I wonder if we might have a little bit of discussion between Mr. Klein and Ms. Reader. If I'm understanding the communication correctly, and I'm sorry, I should have emailed for the last couple of days, but if I'm understanding these collective communications correctly, this is really two, three, and I think four. What you're doing here is you're taking some very thoughtful, creative, but totally legal steps to make sure we use up every single last ARPA dollar, and you're rearranging some of the work, the hard work versus the planning and engineering work. If you could just maybe comment on that, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I can start. So yes, that's exactly what we're doing is, over the past two months, we've been trying to finalize contracts, finalize payments, get an understanding of exactly where we are with final change orders. So on item four, you can see on that local resurfacing, we made sure that we spent all of the ARPA dollars, and then last week, we came back, or yeah, it was last week, we came back, and we had a deduction for design services for Phase Two of Churchwell Park. We originally had design fees in for Strand to do that design, but we weren't sure if we got that design, if it would sit for a long period of time, so we thought it would be better to reduce that contract by 178,000. And then on item number three, we're refunding those, that 178,000 back into that park project. So we're keeping the funding in that park project and making sure that those ARPA dollars are being encumbered for the construction of a portion of that Phase Two that the public and staff thought was extremely critical to that project, to make it kind of bring everything together with some seating areas and some historical features within the park and those types of things. And then, as all of that progressed, the four years have come to a culmination, or is it four, whatever, have come to a culmination of every last remaining dollar was then pushed into the south side for change order number one on the Camp Street project, which is item number two. And what we did, we had some great flexibility on that one because of the funds that Congresswoman Capter had secured for the city for the water portion of that project, and the flexibility to use that water money in Phase Two of that project when we move forward with the remaining portions of Forest Avenue or Forest Drives and Parkview, we can then take those water dollars and push them into the Phase Two to reduce the cost on Phase Two as well. So there's a lot of moving parts over the last two months, and working with the city manager and community development and finance and everybody else to try to make sure that we could allocate those dollars and get them encumbered before the end of the year. There are still a few projects that are outstanding. We have until the end of '26 to actually spend the funds, so the sidewalk project, the large sidewalk project, there's an HVAC project out at the service center, and these two projects are the main ones that we have outstanding, as we've been closing out Wheels Park and Amvets and some of those other projects. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to...
The short answer is yes, this takes care of every ARPA dollar that we have committed, and it'll all be committed.
Well, go on.
I wonder, and I'll be curious to see if this is reported on, if every other community in Erie County, every other government in Erie County spends every last nickel. Unfortunately, there aren't too many members of the public here tonight, but I wish the public knew just how great stewards you are, and this is a lot of work between finance, engineering, law, to prepare all the legislation. To get all this to happen is really rather remarkable, and I just want to tip my hat to all three of you and the rest of your staffs for making sure this happens, because I don't think this happens in every jurisdiction. So thank you.
Along those same lines, Mr. Klein, I think you failed to mention that, and I don't recall which of these items it is, it might be item two we're talking about now, you have scrubbed the floor so cleanly that you are actually buying some brass fittings in one of these projects that are going to go in the next phase of a project that is yet to be built, and the reason for that, I believe, Mr. Klein, the reason for that is, these brass fittings, number one, aren't going to get any cheaper, and number two, they aren't going to get any more available than they are right now.
So again, my commendation for pulling that off. Yeah, under item two, we are already purchasing the water meters, which include the brass fittings that you mentioned, and the contractor for that project ordered them in October, but they're not getting here until April or May. So looking forward to Phase Two, again, that's Parkview and the other three sections of Forest and East Forest, we have a lot more of these to go in. We just received 90% plans this week, so we're hoping to bid that project springtime, and then what we want to do is make sure that we aren't delaying the actual construction for another six to eight months, like the contractor did a great job of making sure they had enough stuff in place. So we're purchasing them here, storing them in the water department, and then when the new contractor comes on board, we'll hand them over and they'll just get paid to install them.
Mr. Klein, I know you have a great staff, because you can't be doing this all on your own, I can tell you that.
My staff is incredible.
This takes a lot of, this takes a lot of delegation, doesn't it?
They are amazing, yes.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Mars, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, will you present item number three?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work performed by Great Lakes Demolition Company, LLC of Clyde, Ohio, for the Churchwell Park Phase One Improvements Project in the amount of $175,291, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons?
Move for adoption of this ordinance under item three in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, will you poll the commission on that motion, please?
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, will you present item number four, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the 2024 Local Street Resurfacing Project in the amount of $34,246.82, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali?
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, will you poll the commission on that motion, please?
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Vargo?
Mr. Waddington? Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Did we done the ordinance? Was that the, was that the motion or the ordinance?
That was the motion.
Now we'll do the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, will you present item number five?
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Carp Path Project at Mills Creek Golf Course, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons?
Move for adoption of this resolution under item five in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. I don't see Mr. Mayling here. The only question that I had about it was, I did notice from our packet that the grant for this was a couple of years old, not out of date, obviously, still, a half of it is still available to us.
It is fully available to us. We did have to do some modifications as to use and swap out for staff time and materials, and that was approved by the granting organization.
Great, and the funds for that will come out of capital improvement for our portion of it? Okay, great.
That is correct.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Mars, will you poll the commission on that motion?
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Mars, will you present item number six?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an aggregation agreement with Eastern Power and Gas, LLC, for the city's residential natural gas aggregation program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Vargo?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Orzak, it appears we are set at 54.5 cents per CCF.
That's correct.
And that is for the year, beginning in April.
Beginning in April.
Not until April.
Yep, and then the letters will start going out in that process that Mr. Bellish had explained, so we have everything in place. He's filed with Puco after our last meeting, so we'll start that timeline going.
So literally, our residents just need to look at their gas bill, and if they're paying more than 54.5, they can certainly, they're in. If they, if they're getting less than that, they do the opt-out.
That's correct.
Very simple, very good. Thank you, Mr. Orzak. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
If I understand correctly, and I'm not certain that I do, and if someone knows better, I'd appreciate it, it appears to me the current price charged by Columbia Gas for the comparable gas is 85 cents per CCF, so this represents a very significant savings of more than 40%.
That's a big, big number.
It is.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Mars, will you poll the commission on that ordinance?
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, will you present item number seven, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing the city's participation in the State of Michigan's procurement program through their extended purchasing program, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase three medium-class Ford F-550 Champion Series buses from Tesco Transportation Equipment Sales, Incorporated of Oregon, Ohio, through the Extended Purchasing Program for the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons?
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under item seven in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Stacy, it appears that we're buying these buses at about an 80% discount, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. 80% is paid for federal flex dollars.
And I was surprised, I hope I'm not, I hope I'm not surprised, 120 days now, they say this delivery is within 120 days?
90 to 120 days, depending on the chassis being on the ground.
Okay, well, that, we, this commission has sat and waited for police cruisers for two or three years and then bought them somewhere else after that. I hope that's not the case here.
Projected timeline from the manufacturer, 90 to 120 days.
Great, and these are big buses?
Correct. 32 passenger vehicles, two wheelchair securements on each.
Excellent, great, thank you. Thanks for, thanks for pulling this off. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Mars, will you poll the commission on that ordinance, please?
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda, we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. Commissioner Waddington has donated $300 this year through payroll deductions. These donations were utilized to help provide food for the gentleman's club, supplies for the Crafts with Cops program, and to the Sandusky Recreation Department. We would like to thank him for his continued support and ask a motion for his donation.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington.
No objection, that motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to Commissioner Waddington.
Sandusky Parks and Rec would like to thank Sandy Kennedy for her donation of several rolls of canvas and multiple black canvases for the art room at Sandusky Rec. Sandy also donated $100 for supplies for the op, or excuse me, the out-of-school program in winter break, if I can get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to Mr. Kennedy.
The next request, I'm going to ask for a motion at the end. The city is in receipt of an economic development transfer, it's commonly referred to as a TREX form, from Greenfield Village, Incorporated, that's the KOA campground at 2 East Shoreway Drive. The permit is coming from Heavenly Treats Incorporated, located in Canal Winchester, Ohio. From their application to the state, Greenfield Village, Incorporated estimates they will invest $40,000 in this project, create additional jobs at their location, and generate an additional $10,000 in sales tax. It is requested the city commission by motion provide authorization to sign off on the TREX transfer form indicating the City of Sandusky endorses and acknowledges the transfer will be for an economic development project which will benefit the community. This proposed TREX transfer will come back to the city commission one additional time in the near future by the Division of Liquor Control for one more step where the city will indicate whether a hearing is requested prior to being authorized by the state, and I'm not sure if Ms. Vargo and Mr. Coons are aware. So basically, what the TREX is, is that if we have too many liquor permits in our area, they can apply for an economic TREX, and it can be transferred from an out-of-area business to one inside the city limits, so that's what they're intending to do or requesting to do. We've done, I think, three or four of them over the years.
And they are simply asking for a motion of support for that economic development piece?
Yeah, they're, they're not asking for a motion of support, I have to sign it that it is an economic, that their proposal is going to have economic impact in the city.
Okay, what do you need from us?
A motion that I can sign it.
So moved. Second.[1554.33]
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, I'm going to have you poll the commission on that.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
And we talked about ARPA a little bit tonight. We are planning on having a presentation to commission in January to lay out to a commission in the community of where all of our ARPA dollars were spent. So that'll be coming next month. A general reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months, we highly recommend that you contact the city to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which could lead to costly repairs for the property owner. The customer accounting office can be reached at 419-627-5893 to schedule an appointment for water disconnection. And lastly, the leaf collection program will be completed this week. For any residents with additional leaves, the drop-off area near the Marquette Drive entrance to the city service center will remain open seven days a week until January 24th. Leaves must be bagged in paper bags. And if I could have one minute to thank the staff, the employees, the community, and the commission for a great year. I'm honored to be able to serve in my capacity. It's been a whirlwind year, and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas